Thank you all for your attention. As usual, I want to give you an update on what we're doing in the emergency management business. We've got a lot going on and a lot that's important to know about. First of all, my average general reminder, be sure you have your go-kit ready to go, not just up here thinking maybe, but be sure you have it ready to go. There have been a lot of communities that have needed it in the last year, and if they don't have it, they're in trouble; if they do, they're in good shape. So let's make sure our town is fully prepared. One of the biggest things when you have to leave in a disaster is pet care. What are we going to do with the pets? People have historically not wanted to leave their pets behind. It has finally become law that we have to do something for them. So we now have to make arrangements for pets at our emergency shelters. To that regard, we're going to have a program on June 18. There are flyers at each of the desks outside. From 6:30 to 8:30, we're going to talk about what you do, what we're going to do, and how it's done. It's open to the public, and if you have a pet that you're concerned about, please come and find out what's going on and what we'll be doing. If you can give me a call or an email, just to let me know you're coming so we have an idea of how many people, that would be great. It's going to be up at the Highway Department, which is where our current shelter program is carried out. The other thing that's new in the safety world is the Middlesex Drug Takeback Program, and there's also a flyer about that up there, if you would be sure to take that. That is the program where there's a drop-off box at the police station. It's open 24/7. If you want to drop off medications that you don't need anymore, that have expired, anything of that nature, they're much safer there than they are in your house, in your bathroom closet. We want to get them in a safe place. Please do not put them down the toilet. We don't need to medicate the water system. So that's my news for the day. Come to the training program for the Pets Disaster Program and take your drugs back to the police station, and have a good evening.
There being a quorum present, I call this annual town meeting to order on May 6, 2014. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is customary, this meeting will be conducted under the parliamentary rules of town meeting time. Please be recognized before you speak and identify yourself by name and dress for the floor and for the viewers on TV this evening. Please direct all your comments and questions to the Chair. All motions must be in writing and brought up to Madam Clerk at some time during the discussion, or at least by the time of the vote. If a matter is finally voted this evening, it may be reconsidered upon a majority vote if a motion is made this evening. If this meeting goes to a second night, which would be on Thursday, May 10th, eighth, excuse me, there would have to be, upon reconsideration, a nine-tenths vote in order to be successful. If a vote, or its tally, is questioned tonight by seven individuals, we'll swear in the tellers and bring them out to actually take the vote. If you're confused about a situation on the floor, which is prone to happen from time to time, we will try to straighten it out. You can raise questions upon being recognized. If you wish to raise a point of order, please stand in place and state your wish to raise a point of order, and you'll be recognized. You may interrupt the speaker, and then we'll take under consideration what the point of order might be. If you wish to raise a point of privilege, please stand in place and state that you wish to raise a point of privilege. You may also interrupt a speaker for that purpose. We will listen to you and decide if there is a matter of privilege involved. Our visitors and guests should all be in the front row, very nice, with tags on so we can identify you. Madam Clerk, do we have a return of the warrant?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Townsend by posting up attested copies of the same at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street at the Center, West Townsend Fire Station, 460 Main Street in West Townsend, Police Communication Center, 70 Brookline Road, North Middlesex Regional High School, 19 Main Street, and Harbor Church, 80 Main Street, at least seven days before the date of the meeting as within directed. Constable of Townsend, John Whittmore.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Mr. McNabb, is this when you wish to be recognized?
I wish to acknowledge Chris Klisch and her service to the town of Townsend. Chris is retiring after 32 years of service. Her retirement date is August 1, 2014. I thank her for her commitment to the seniors of this community and for her commitment to all the residents of Townsend.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed the 32 years, and I'm going to miss it so much, but I'll still be in Townsend. Thank you.
The first order of business at the annual town meeting is for me to nominate and ask for the floor approval of a deputy moderator. And tonight, as is my custom, I'd like to nominate John Barrett as deputy moderator. May I have an acclamation for his approval?
Aye.
Thank you. That's one acclamation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. I told them to show up, but, you know, if you don't, that's your risk. Article 1, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless other provisions are made by Massachusetts General Law, by Town Charter, or by vote of the town, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all town officers unless otherwise provisions are made by Massachusetts General Law, by Townsend Charter, or by vote of the town.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 1, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 2, to see if the town will vote to hear reports of any committees, boards, commissions, et cetera, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Liscio.
I move that the town vote to hear reports of any committees, boards, commissions, et cetera.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to the hearing of any reports. Do we have any committees, boards, agencies, et cetera, that might want to make a report? Wow. I guess the Bruins are a big draw tonight. I see none, none wishing to at least raise a hand at this point, so we'll move on to Article 3. To see if the town will vote to choose a committee of three West Townsend residents to serve as members of the James H. Tucker Fund in accordance with the bequest for the sole purpose to keep the curbing, gravestones, and monuments in good order, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to choose a committee of three West Townsend residents, Kenneth Gurken, Pamela B. Hayman, and Michael Marshan, to serve as members of the James H. Tucker Fund in accordance with the bequest for the sole purpose to keep the curbing, gravestones, and monuments in good order.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article 3. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 3, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of an amount to be inserted for the purpose of offsetting the fiscal year 14 snow and ice deficit under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McNabb.
I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $207,89,000 for the purchase of offsetting the FY14 snow and ice deficit under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 4. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, Mr. Gurken. Colin, could you read the amount again? Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 4? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 4, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of an amount to be inserted for the purpose of paying prior fiscal year bills in accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $40,008 for the purpose of paying prior fiscal year bills in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64.
Motion been made and seconded with regard to Article Number 5. This is paying the bills of a prior year, so I believe that's a nine-tenths vote.
Four fifths.
Four fifths? All right, that's good. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. All those in favor of the motion, please -- oh, excuse me.
Repeat that number.
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 5. Yes, Mr. Cloutier.
Just curious, what are we paying off?
Mr. Moderator, if I could?
Yes.
This is a prior year bill for unemployment insurance charges that were assessed against the town.
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 5. Any further questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 5, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury various sums to supplement the fiscal year 14 operating budget, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Yes, Ms. Liscio.
I move that the town vote to supplement the FY14 operating budget as follows. By transferring $20,000 from health insurance to Treasurer Professional Services, by transferring $5,000 from surplus revenue to Management Information Systems expenses, and by transferring $17,000 from health insurance to Veterans Benefits.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 6? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All of those in favor of the motion on Article 6, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of an amount to be inserted for the purpose of purchasing a new copier, scanner, printer for Town Hall, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McNabb.
I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $6,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new copier, scanner, printer fax for Town Hall.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 7. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes. We'll get you a microphone.
Carol Wright, Warren Road. Are there any recommendations from the FinCom on any of these?
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 7. Is there a recommendation sheet? In the packet is a yellow sheet, which I'm informed has some recommendations. Ah, yes. It's right after the warrant in my package. Thank you. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 7? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article -- ah.
Geraldine Bouzec, 84 Highland Street. Is there any type of a maintenance package with this, or what's the warranty, and what's the whole deal on it?
Mr. Sheehan.
We haven't actually entered into a contract to buy a specific machine or a make of machine. They typically come with an initial warranty and service, but we would look to contract for that down the road.
Questions come as part of the discussion on Article 7. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion? Now we appear to be ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $4,600 for the purpose of purchasing and replacing three older-model automatic electronic defibrillators, AEDs, carried in our frontline cruisers, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $4,600 for the purpose of purchasing and replacing three older-model automatic electronic defibrillators, AEDs, carried in our frontline cruisers.
Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article 8. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. Hello? Is there someone who wishes to speak? Quick exit. Then we appear to be ready to vote on Article 8. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $8,100 for the purpose of purchasing and replacing existing SIG Sauer .40 caliber firearms currently carried by the members of the Townsend Police Department, trading in firearms currently carried, or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Chief Marshall.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $8,100 for the purpose of purchasing and replacing existing SIG Sauer .40 caliber firearms currently carried by members of the Townsend Police Department, trading in firearms currently carried.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 9. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, sir. We'll get you a microphone.
Brian Sanford, 7 Pondrosa. Chief, I see another article right after that to fix them. Is that -- you're going to fix the new ones he just bought?
I left it up to the town to decide what they want to do here.
That one's going down?
My preference would be buy new.
Okay.
But that's why the other article's on there, in case the town didn't pass us. We'll be voting to take no action on the second article if this passes.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 9. Yes, sir. We'll get you a microphone to help.
Robert DeLong, 22 Ash Street. Chief, how old are these guns?
They're almost 14 years old, the current firearms we have. They were purchased in October of 2000. The -- recommended that they be rebuilt after five years. We haven't touched these guns. The manufacturer recommends that they be replaced, or they usually replace around the eight-year mark. So we're going on 14.
Do they use that often? I'm just saying, have they worn out?
We try not to shoot anyone. However, they're used, obviously, in practice. We have to stay proficient with their use. So they are used quite a bit for practicing, and unfortunately, the frames have a tendency, after a certain amount of usage, to develop stress cracks. While the rebuilding replaces the pins, the springs, hammers, and that kind of thing, it doesn't cover the frames. So that's my concern.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 9. Any further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Phil Moran, Pondrosa Drive. Chief, how many guns are we talking about?
Should've said that before. We currently have 30. They're given to all full-time and part-time police officers, and then we have an inventory in stock in case some of those weapons break down.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 9. Any further questions or comments? We appear to be ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 9, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of $5,400 for the purpose of refurbishing the existing SIG Sauer .40 caliber firearms currently carried by members of the Townsend Police Department, or take any action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Yes, Chief Marshall.
I move to take no action on Article 10.
Motion has been made and seconded to take no action on Article 10. Any questions or comments concerning the motion? There appear to be none. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 10, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to rescind $9,501 of the authorized but unissued balance of the $200,000 borrowing under Article 30 of the warrant of the annual town meeting held on May 4, 2004, for the purpose of funding septic system repairs under the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, MWPAT, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Yes, Ms. Smart.
I move that the town vote to rescind $9,501 of the authorized but unissued balance of the $200,000 borrowing under Article 30 of the warrant of the annual town meeting held on May 4, 2004, for the purpose of funding septic system repairs under the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust, MWPAT.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 11. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? We'll get you a microphone so all can hear.
Jane Stonefield, Warren Road. It says submitted by, but there's no -- so could we have an answer?
Do we know who has submitted this motion?
It was the Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen. Any other questions or comments with regard to the motion? If not, we appear to be ready to vote. Town Council, I believe this would be a majority vote? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on Article 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury the sum of an amount to be inserted for the purpose of funding road improvements, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Ms. Liscio.
I move that the town appropriate $150,000 to pay costs of various roadway improvement projects, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 6 of the General Laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 12. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, sir.
Brian Sanford, 7 Pondrosa. $140,000, how many potholes does that fill? Come on. Don't we get Chapter 90? Don't we get some extra money from the state this year for potholes? $140,000? There's got to be more money out there to fix what we have left of crumbling roads in this town. in this town. $140 isn't gonna do much to fix any of it. Why, why so little? We could spend that $40 million for a school, let's build some roads, too.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Liscio.
The $150,000 is to, finally, I'm gonna say that word, to finally spend some of our money on repairing the roads. Up until now, in asking you for this, we've relied solely on Chapter 90. We wanted to be able to say, you know what, we don't want to just depend on the state. We want our townspeople to know the towns are our responsibility, too. And Chapter 90, along with other state aid, we just, we can't always depend on that. So this is meant to supplement Chapter 90, whatever we are grateful to the state for giving us, but also, in terms of potholes, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there was an additional amount of money that the governor granted for some pothole repairs that are gonna be done across the state pretty quickly, too. So at least we got a little bit of a bonus there. Unfortunately, the governor's office is still holding back a couple of hundred thousand dollars on Chapter 90, but this is so that other towns do this, too. Other towns say, we're not gonna just rely on the state, we've gotta pitch in for our town stuff, too. And we get lots and lots of complaints. So it might be a drop in the bucket, but it's something.
Mr. Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian, this was the, the $150,000 is the amount that was requested by the highway superintendent. He makes that request annually. Again, as, as Sue said, it is, it is a start, it's not the be-all and end-all. We've got millions of dollars' worth of road needs, but we can't fund it all at once, so...
Question and comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 12. Yes, Ms. Marinell.
Joyce Marinell, Blood Road. I'd just like to know of that $150,000 that the town is going to fund, how much, how many roads is that going to repair? You know, to me, we should be putting X number of dollars every year aside for road repairs. Our roads are deplorable. Thank you.
Comment comes as part of the discussion. Mr. Kukula.
Good evening. My name is Ed Kukula, I'm the highway superintendent. And I want to let you know that, yes, I have been requesting $150,000 a year through capital planning for, who knows, yeah, seven, eight years, anyway. And that's when we could probably get a mile of road done eight years ago for $150,000, so we've left it at that. Right now, to reclaim and pave a mile of road is somewhere in the vicinity of $250,000. The state gives us approximately $400,000 a year, depending on how much they budget. This year, we are getting to $400,000, thank goodness. So if you look at those numbers, we get a mile and a half done a year, maybe. It, it all depends on the width of the road. How do we prioritize that? We will be, we used to do it on my judgment. My judgment sometimes can be skewed because people thought that we were doing roads for a reason, and not just for the reason of the road being in bad shape. So this year, we are actually gonna hire a company, as a lot of cities and towns are doing now, to do a maintenance inventory of our roads and repairs that are necessary, and give us an actual dollar cost to what it is, what it will cost to maintain these roads, repair them on a, on a yearly basis, and not just when we get some money. We're spending $20,000, $27,000 to have this done, but if you look at 86 miles of road, and if you figure everyone needed some kind of work, you're looking, you know, if you say $100,000, you can do the math pretty easily, and that's just basic. We have been underfunded for considerable amount of time, and this year, the roads showed their stress and their distress just by the number of potholes that came out. And somebody asked about the money for the potholes. We did get money from the state, and for our town, it amounted to $63,000. We are going to do a section of Shirley Road, we're gonna, we're gonna mill off the top inch and a half of the pavement, and then replace the inch and a half back, and it's six tenths of a mile, that $63,000 doesn't even cover the cost of doing that. We are gonna tap into Chapter 90 to, to do the rest of that. So $150,000, it is a drop in the bucket, but if you want real numbers, we, we'd be talking probably a half a million dollars a year to try to get our, our roads back in shape so we can maintain them. But when we do the, the road program, the maintenance road program, we'll know for sure what that cost is gonna entail on a yearly basis, and we'll be able to fund it better, hopefully, next year.
The gentleman against the wall on the back.
Todd Malanson, Clement Road. This doesn't help us out right here, but have you looked at, or when you get, have this program, I strongly suggest, a lot of water departments and water utilities have done this, have worked in conjunction with their highway department to upgrade or replace a water main, getting money from DEP to actually pay for the paving, so you take care of both at the same time. There's a lot more money available for DEP for that sort of work, and it would help you cover your, your, the road replacement, and you would probably end up with a, a better quality road, or a more full replacement. That's just a suggestion, sorry.
Alright, okay, I think that's something that, you know, Paul would have to look at first, and then if that money is available, he probably would speak with me to see if we get a cost for that.
The gentleman right here.
Ed Saban, Reagan Road. Listen, I just wanted to ask you about that $20,000 study. Is that a one-time thing, or is that a yearly thing?
No, it's, it's a, one-time fund that they're gonna show from year to year what it's gonna cost to maintain our roads, and they're gonna, they're gonna go through every road, they're gonna say whether we need to replace, to do a full death reclamation, and we pave it, maybe do a mill of a road, and we, and just mill the top surface.
It's a one-time thing?
It's a one-time shot, so we can get, so we can get a true cost.
So they won't see them again next year on the warrant?
We won't see them, no.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article number 12. Any further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Ed, aren't you a highway engineer, a road and, road building type engineer and designer?
I'm a civil engineer, yes.
So, why is the town having to hire somebody that he's capable of doing for us at $30,000? Is there a reason why we're hiring somebody from out of town instead of having Ed do this?
Ms. Liscio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It, it's really, is this allowed because it's a different cost?
I understand.
This $150 isn't what we referred to when we said the study, but since it's on the floor, the study is, at one time, you could think of it as a road repair plan, and it's substantial, if anybody wants to take a look at the one that Lunenburg has, I believe it's on their website, but it, it really is comprehensive, it looks at all of the roads, it puts them into a database, it classifies them objectively in terms of what they need, a little bit of repair or a lot of repair, and projects as well, if I did this plan, how long would it be before I had to do a full reclamation on this road, and how long before we'd have to do it on that one? So it really looks at our roads as assets, and decides when those assets would need to be updated.
I am gonna rule it point of order that we're not under consideration of that study right now. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 12? Could we have the motion reread? It was rather lengthy and had language that is not on the warrant.
I move that the town appropriate $150,000 to pay costs of various roadway improvement projects, and for the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, 6 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
We're ready to vote? Town Council, what will be the quantum two-thirds? This will require a two-thirds vote to approve the bond issue. All those in favor of the motion on Article 12, please say aye. Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of supplementing the Conservation Commission's land fund, or take any other action in relation thereto, is there a motion? Ms. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from surplus revenue the sum of $5,000 for the purpose of supplementing the Conservation Commission's land fund.
Motion's made and seconded with regard to... Which article? Article number 13. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, sir, in the corner.
Glenn Johnson, Balsam Drive, Townsend. They're looking for $5,000. Is there a couple of sales of land coming up eventually that that money could be used in place of this?
Question comes as part of the discussion as the motion on Article 14. Yes?
The sale that you're referring to at the end of the warrant is, goes into the general fund, not into the conservation fund?
Question comes as part of the discussion on the motion on Article 13. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 13, please say aye. Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. How close will the actual motion be on Article 14 to the wording in the warrant?
The wording is the same, Mr. Moderator, the numbers are the same or lower?
Same or lower. Would anyone object to us just reading the beginning of this article, and then relying on the motion to be made to put the chart into play? Relieving me of the obligation to read the chart. You will hear it through the motion. Thank you. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to continue to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, for fiscal year 2015, beginning July 1, with the specified receipts credited to each fund, the purposes for which each fund may be spent, the annual amount expenditures, the amount annual expenditures shall not exceed, and the entity authorized to expend from the fund as outlined in the following table, or take any other action in relation thereto, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. McNabb.
I move that the town vote to continue to authorize revolving funds for certain town departments under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, for FY 2015, beginning July 1, with the specified receipts credited to each fund, the purpose for each, or for which each fund may be spent, the amount annual expenditures shall not exceed, and the entity authorized to spend from the fund as outlined, outlined in the following table.
You're gonna have to keep going.
Okay.
Just the amounts?
Just the amounts? Or it all?
Just the amounts? Can we rely on the chart for the rest? Okay, thank you. Yes, just the amounts, because that's gonna be the only variation.
Okay. So, line one, board of health revolving account, $9,200. Line two, recreation revolving account, $52,000. Line three, facilities maintenance revolving account, $4,500. Line four, cemetery cost of internment revolving account, $22,400. Line five, fire alarm maintenance revolving account, $450. Line six, animal care program revolving account, $1.
Motion's been made and seconded. Could you repeat the numbers for the floor? Just the numbers. Line one, line two, line three.
Line one, $9,200. Line two, $52,000. Line three, $4,500. Line four, $22,400. Line five, $450. Line six, $1.
Any questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 14? Yes, Ms. Kruger.
Mary Jane Kruger. Why are these numbers changed? Our, our report doesn't have the numbers that you read off.
Mr. Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The numbers that were in the, in the warrant that was published and that was handed out to you tonight are the numbers that we used in the past, and those were the, the basis for which we created the warrant a couple of months ago. The law prohibits us from authorizing an amount in excess of what we actually collected the prior year. So for instance, in line number one, the board of health revolving account, we only collected $9,200. We, we cannot authorize spending more than that, or we cannot authorize the revolving account to have more than that.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 14. Yes? Is there someone down here? I guess not. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes?
I'd just like to know what the total of Article 14 is now, total expenditure.
Town accountant does.
Hi, Kim Thales, Town Accountant. The total is $88,551. You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 14? Yes, sir. Mr. Biswinger.
Mr. Moderator. Under animal care program, and it says $1 now, where it says board care, veterinary expenses, but under board, for a dollar, we don't do anything with the animals, we don't feed them?
Question comes as part of the discussion.
Do we just kill them?
Mr. Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We authorized the creation of the revolving account for the animal control program a couple of years ago. However, in the last fiscal year, we, we did not collect anything, or we only collected a dollar, so therefore, we're only allowed to reauthorize the revolving fund for a dollar. We hope that will improve going forward, but that's what we've, that's what we've got so far.
Question and comment comes part of the discussion of the motion on Article 14. Any further questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none, we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 15. If everyone is acceptable to it, we'll handle this the same as we did the last one, since we don't have any numbers on this one yet, by the looks. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation accounts for fiscal year 2015, beginning July 1, amounts as outlined in the following table, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer from receipts reserved for appropriation accounts for FY 15, beginning July 1, amounts as outlined in the following table. Special revenue account cemetery sale of lot fund to general fund cemetery improvement fund to supplement the operating costs and capital needs of the cemetery department in the amount of $7,950. From special revenue account Comcast government access account to general fund MIS department expenses to supplement funding for the operating costs of the MIS department in the amount of $30,000. Title V, MWPAT receipts reserved account to debt service, MWPAT, to supplement the funding for repayment of debt owed to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust in the amount of $27,734. From the West Townsend Reading Room receipts reserved appropriation account to the West Townsend Reading Room expenses to supplement funding for operating costs of the reading room in the amount of $2,900. And for the ambulance receipt reserved account to the fire EMS department expense account to supplement funding for operating costs of the emergency medical services in the amount of $250,000.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 15. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? No questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Snape. We'll get you a microphone.
Could you explain supplemental funding, please?
We use these funds to offset the operating costs of the various departments that are named. For instance, if you look at the bottom one, the line five, the ambulance receipts reserved account, the ambulance department generates, or the fire EMS department generates a certain sum of money every year for ambulance services, ambulance calls. We take a portion of those receipts, in this case, $250,000, to offset the cost, or a portion of the cost, of the operation of the fire EMS department. We do that for all of the other departments that are listed with the funds that are noted.
Question and comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 15. Any further comments or questions? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of $4,000 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's Fiscal Year 15 Periodic Inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Laura Shifrin. I move that the town vote to transfer from overlay surplus the sum of $4,000 for the purpose of funding the Assessor's FY 15 Periodic Inspections and Property Data Verification Program as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Bureau of Local Assessments.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 16. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion on Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund, the amount of an amount, the amount of, an amount to be inserted, for the purpose of paying the fiscal year 15 debt service to the North Middlesex Regional School District for the town's assessment for the Spalding Memorial School roof replacement project, and the Hawthorne Brook Middle School septic replacement project, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Liscio.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Capital Stabilization Fund the amount of $204,196 for the purpose of paying the FY 15 debt service to the North Middlesex Regional School District for the town's assessment for the Spalding Memorial Roof Replacement Project, and $73,208 for the purpose of paying the FY 15 non-excluded debt service on the fire ladder truck.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article 17. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, sir. Give me a second. We'll get you... We'll get you a microphone.
I'd appreciate if you could go over those figures again and explain the purpose for each one.
Ms. Liscio. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Shan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The first one, the, for the purpose of the debt service for the Spalding Roof Project, the amount is $204,196. Two oh four, one nine six. And then the other one is for non-excluded debt service on the ladder truck. That amount is $73,208. Seven three, two oh eight.
Just a moment. Just a moment. Mr. Shan.
Yes, the article is for authorization to spend out of the Capital Stabilization Account. The two items that we were able to identify, one being the Spalding Roof, is the $204,196. The other was the Hawthorne Brook Septic Project. At the time that we prepared the warrant, we thought that we would have a payment on that. That turned out not to be the case. And we've also proposed to pay a portion of the debt service for this year's, or this year's debt service on the ladder truck, and that's the $73,000. Seventy three, two oh eight.
Well, shouldn't that be a separate item?
I think the question that Mr. Sable is raising is it seems to be outside the four-square of the actual wording of the appropriations. I understand your positions that these are intended to be transfers from the stabilization fund.
Correct.
So, the question, and I'm predisposed to allowing it to be heard and voted, is that the article in the warrant gives people the notice that it's gonna be a stabilization fund transfer. And if they do not want to portion that, then I'd divide the question. If you wanna separate those, I'd separate all three of them, for that matter, if the floor wants to.
Well, there are three items included, but the ladder truck is not. So, my question is, shouldn't that have been a separate article?
Well, I'll entertain a motion to separate it, but I'm not gonna entertain that discussion until that motion's made. I'll allow the motion as it is right now. Yes, sir, in the back. Well, the floor usually gets their shot out first.
I just had a question. It's a debt service payment that we have to pay, correct?
Correct.
Ms. Wood.
The truck isn't mentioned on the warrant in this article. I thought you couldn't address it if it wasn't mentioned in the article.
I'm taking that the article itself that's on the warrant is to authorize from the capitalization fund. So, I'm willing to say that the motion is fair warning, but what I'm asking for is if people are objecting to considering the truck, or if they're objecting to either of components of the advertised one, then let's separate them out and have separate motions to advance them. Otherwise, I'm gonna allow that motion unless somebody picks it off at this point. Yes, Mrs. Stonefield. Motion has been made to separate this into three separate votes. So, we're gonna take discussion on that right now. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion to separate this into three separate requests? Then we're ready to vote. All those in favor of considering the items in Article 17 as three separate motions, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. It's only a 50 percent vote. You'll spend more time debating this than you will actually deciding the three motions. So, please, do you wanna move the case, or do you wanna, do you wanna sit here and debate those things? The first one on the floor will be the debt service stabilization fund request for the North Middlesex Regional School District in the amount of... Yes, but what's the amount of the appropriation or the request? Please repeat it through the microphone. That's on the floor right now. Any questions or comments with regard to the first motion? Yes, Ms. Wright.
And that's just for the Spalding Roof?
I believe that is for the North Middlesex Assessment for the Spalding Roof.
That is correct.
Any further questions or comments with regard to the first motion? Yes, Ms. Kruger.
Is this the final payment for the roof?
No, it is not. I believe there are... Kim, do you recall if there are two more, or one? I think there are two more.
Question comes as part of the discussion on the first motion with regard to Article 17. Any further questions or comments? We appear to be ready to vote. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the first motion on Article 17 to approve the Spalding Memorial School Roof Replacement allocation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. The second motion is with regard to the Hawthorne Brook Middle School Septic Replacement Project. How much is that allocation?
That amount is $73,208. Seven three, two oh eight. Oh, I'm sorry. There is nothing for the Hawthorne Brook. Sorry. That's a zero.
Very good, very good, very good, floor. Any questions or comments with regard to the second one? We appear ready to vote. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. All right, we're to the dramatic last one. What is the motion for the financing related to the hook and ladder, or however that was worded?
That one is $73,208.
And what is the purpose?
That is to pay for the debt service for fiscal 2015. And if I could elaborate on that a little bit, Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
This is something that we decided to do this year as part of the budget process. Initially, we had this as part of the budget motion, the fiscal 15 operating budget motion. We thought that it would be cleaner to take it and put it into the capital stabilization article, because capital stabilization requires a two-thirds majority, whereas the annual operating budget requires a simple majority. So, we thought where we're doing a capital stabilization transfer anyways, which is the two oh four, one ninety six for the school, which is also to offset a portion of the operating budget, it made sense to put the $73,008 into this article as well.
Questions or comments with regard to this final portion of the motion on Article 17? There appears to be no questions or comments. We're ready to vote. This will require a two-thirds vote to be approved. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 18. Valuable exercise. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds in the treasury such sums that may be necessary to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to a detailed budget totaling an amount to be inserted, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. McNabb.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $17,840,361 and transfer from overlay surplus the sum of $30,000 to defray the charges and expenses of the town for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to a detailed budget totaling $17,870,361.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the operating budget that is set forth in the handout. As has been our adopted practice, we're going to put out each section of the budget separately for consideration of questions from the floor. I will find the number for the total general government portion, which in the handout appears to be on the top of page five. And in this case, we're motioning the far outside numbers. The total number for the general government is $1,075,600. And I understand there may be a adjustment in the figures on the first page of the budget.
On the second page. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, on the second page.
If you go to page two of the budget, and you go into the Treasurers Department, which is Department number 145, just above halfway down on the page there, there's an adjustment between personnel services and wages, or, excuse me, personnel services and expenses. It doesn't affect the bottom line, but in the budget that you have in front of you, in the Treasurers Department for the treasurer's salary, there is a zero there. There's been an adjustment to that. The number should be $27,583. Two seven, five eight, three. The expenses line is reduced to $24,600.
And the total number remains at $60,477?
Correct. The subtotal, or the total for the department, remains $60,477. The subtotal for the general government remains the same.
So, with that adjustment in the figures, we now have on the floor the general government portion, which runs from page one to the top of page five in the budget handout. Any questions or comments for any portion of the total of the general government portion of the budget is on the floor. What time did the puck drop? What time is it now? What time did the puck drop for the start of this Bruins game? A minute ago? Really? The floor is on the clock now. Any questions or comments directed to the general government portion of the budget? Yes, ma'am. We'll get you a microphone. Right here. On the floor. Second person. There we go.
Hi, Lorna Fred Warren. I'm looking at Item 4146 in the Tax Collector's Office, and there's a pretty substantial difference between what the department requested, which was $86,300, and what the selectmen are recommending of $117,054. And I'd just like an explanation of why there's that big discrepancy.
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on the general government portion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The change there is for the town to implement what's known as a lockbox service. Right now, when you pay your taxes, whether it's excise or property, it goes in, for the most part, in an envelope or by foot you carry it in. You pay the staff at the desk. This will allow people to mail their bills in, their payments in. It goes to a processing center. The intent is to cut down on the amount of foot traffic to allow staff to become more efficient and address some of the other requirements in the office. Essentially, it's a method of automating in order to improve the efficiency of the operation. Related to that are, we'll be going to... We do quarterly payments now, but we do biannual mailings. We'll be going to quarterly mailing. So you won't get the mailing twice a year. With two stubs, you'll get four mailings a year with one stub each time. So it should help the taxpayer as well as helping the operation in the office.
Question or comment comes as part of the discussion of the general government portion of the budget. Any further questions or comments? If there are none, we're ready to proceed. The total value, as appears on the top of page five, is $1,075,600. All those in favor of that amount for the total general government portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Public safety starts on page five and continues to page seven. A little past halfway down is the double line. The total amount, $2,681,479. Right now, the total public safety portion of the budget is on the floor. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Valerie Baker.
You may have to speak more into the microphone. Oh, that would help too.
Is that better?
Much better.
I'm Valerie Baker. I'm looking at Item 225, and I see that we've gone for out-of-state travel and other expenses from $14,400 last year to almost $50,000. I'd like a little bit of an explanation.
You're referring to line 220?
225. Under Personnel Services, other expenses jumped from $14,400 to $49,450.
I see. Anyone have a position? Yes, Chief Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We have several funding sources for our technology. And what we've done this year is we've reduced expenses in the police budget as well as the fire department's budget and tried to combine those services and put them all under the communications budget. So you'll see offsetting reductions in police and fire department. And there's going to be... We also fund it with grant money, which has been used in the past for things that it shouldn't have been used for. It was used for offsetting expenses, but it was meant for buying equipment and so forth. So we've tried to combine that to make it a little bit cleaner. And that's why the increase in the communications. It's all going to be, the technology's all going to be under communications because it combines police, fire, and communications.
Question and comments comes as part of the discussion on the motion. Any further questions or comments directed to the public safety portion of the budget? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Pat DeLong Ashtray. Under Department 220, under expenses, the request is for $188,767, and yet it's recommended for $197,767. I was wondering what the additional $9,000 was for?
Question comes as part of the discussion of public safety. Anyone want to take a stab at that one? Good question. Yes. The accountants always have an answer.
The increase is due to a request for turnout gear for $9,000. That was supposed to be included in the budget, I think.
Thank you for the memory jog. That was an item that Chief Klein had requested or had mentioned when department budgets were initially due in January. At the time, we weren't sure that we would have the funding available to do that. We held that out of the original budget. He held that out of his original department request. As the budget became clearer, came into more clearer focus, we were able to put that $9,000 back in. As Kim said, it is for turnout gear for three firefighters.
Question or comments comes as part of the discussion on the public safety portion of the budget. Any further questions or comments? If not, we appear to be ready to vote on the number. It appears on page seven. All those in favor of that figure for the total public safety portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it unanimous. And since we are with public safety, this is a portion of the proceeding for another comment from the selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I failed to turn the Post-it note over. I also wish to thank Chief Donald Klein. The chief is retiring or has retired, and I also want to acknowledge his service to the community and the residents of Townsend.
I wish to thank everyone here, the Board of Selectmen and all the town boards and committees that I've worked with over the last seven years. It has been my honor and a privilege to serve this town, and I thank you for your cooperation in helping me bring this department to where it is today. Thank you.
Onto education. The total education portion of the budget is on the balance of page seven. The number is $9,817,244. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the education portion of the budget? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the total figure of $9,817,244 for the education portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Streets and highways. It takes up the first top two-thirds of the page eight of the budget. Total figure, $675,030. The total streets and highway portion of the budget is on the floor right now. Are there any questions or comments? There appear to be none. All those in favor of a total figure of $675,030 for the streets and highways, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. The solid waste services portion of the budget is on the floor. The number is at the bottom of page eight. The total solid waste services portion of the budget is on the floor right now. What's that? We could have answered it for him. Could have been a surprise. Any questions or comments directed to the total solid waste service portion of the budget? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the figure of $648,598 for solid waste services, that portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Onto human services. It begins on the top of page nine and continues on to the top of page 10. The total figure is $348,978. The total human services portion of the budget is on the floor right now. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the human services portion of the budget? There appearing to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of $348,978 for the total human services portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Culture and Recreation. It's on the balance of page 10. Total figure for culture and recreation is $247,105. The total culture and recreation portion of the budget is on the floor right now. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the culture and recreation portion of the budget? There appearing to be none. All those in favor of the total figure of $247,105 for culture and recreation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Onto page 11. The total debt service portion of the budget. The bottom line number, about three-quarters of the way down of page 11, is $446,544. The total debt service portion of the budget is on the floor right now. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am. We'll get you a microphone. Right here in the front of... Raise your hand, Mr. Cludiers in the neighborhood.
Meg Janoder, Maplewood Drive. Under Number 751, it says principal and interest for the fire ladder truck. Did we not just vote on that?
Question comes as part of the discussion of the total debt service portion of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, that's correct, Meg. You see that right under the $73,208, in parentheses, there's the same number. That indicates that that amount is being paid for or being offset somewhere else. Similar to the $27,734 that was in Article 14, I think, the Water Pollution Abatement Trust Debt Service. So it's offset by the action we took earlier in the evening.
Third question. The total debt service portion is on the floor right now. Are there any further questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Barrett?
If we could get some explanation on Number 715 and 755. Talks about principal and interest on Fire Station Landfill, six and 13 Elm properties. Are these the properties we purchased some years ago for the fire department? And I guess, capping the landfill, some explanation about these items?
Questions come as part of the discussion on the debt service portion of the budget.
That is correct, Ms. Barrett. Those are related to prior purchases. Those have been on the books for some period of time now, having to do with the fire station, landfill, and the two Elm Street properties, as well as the... One is interest and one is principal.
Questions, comments come as part of the discussion on the debt service portion of the budget. Any further questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the total figure of $446,544 for the total debt service portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. We're down to the final item in the budget, the insurance portion. The total insurance figure appears to be $1,929,783. And the total insurance portion of the budget is now on the floor. And the total insurance portion of the budget is now on the floor. Are there any questions or comments with regard to the insurance portion of the budget?
On the total insurance, the department requests and the selectmen recommended is quite a big difference. Can we get an explanation about that?
Question comes as part of the discussion of the insurance portion of the budget.
Mrs. Wright, was that on the health insurance, did you say? Yeah, we initially had, had estimated, excuse me, a much higher amount for our insurance. We started off projecting as much as a ten percent increase in our employee health insurance rates, that eventually in January, when we first, when we put the first draft together, that came down to about seven percent. Over the last six weeks or so, we've been soliciting, we, we solicited bids for health insurance from carriers other than Blue Cross, the company that, that we've been with now and through the insurance pool that we're part of. As a result of that bid process and the negotiations that went along with that, we were able to get a two percent reduction on our rates for health insurance for, for the HMO product, which is what most of our employees are in. So that's why that change comes in.
Comments come as part of the discussion of the insurance portion of the budget. Any further questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the total figure of one million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars for the insurance portion of the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. So we now are left with a grand total of seventeen million, eight hundred seventy thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars for the budget. All those in favor of that total figure, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Back to the beginning, Article nineteen. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of an amount to be inserted to operate the water department for the fiscal year 2015, and that an amount to be inserted of this sum come from water enterprise fund revenues, and in order to fund the cost of intermunicipal expenses, that an amount to be inserted of this sum be appropriated in the general fund and funded from enterprise revenues, or take any, take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion? Yes. Mr. Rafuse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Rafuse, Water Department Superintendent. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eight hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars to operate the water department for fiscal year 2015, and that six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars of this sum come from water enterprise fund revenues, and in order to fund the cost of intermunicipal expenses, that one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of this sum be appropriated in general fund and funded from the enterprise revenues.
Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article nineteen. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Yes, sir, in the corner.
The numbers again, please.
Could the numbers be repeated, Mr. Rafuse?
For the first base, it's eight hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. The second number is six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the third number is one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Thank you.
Any questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article nineteen? Yes, Mr. Snaith.
In the past, the water department's always been funded by its own revenues. Did I misunderstand that the one hundred and eighty-three thousand is coming from the general fund?
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article nineteen. Mr. Rafuse.
Initially, it is funded, if I'm correct, by the general fund, and the water department pays this amount back to the town. It's for, it's part of the intermunicipal agreement. It's for things like health insurance, property insurance, workman's compensation, things of that like. The accumulation of that, but the water department pays that amount back to the town.
Question, comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article nineteen. Any other questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article twenty, "To see if the town will vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one hundred eight, as amended, and as appropriated in this warrant, or take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion? Ms. Ma.
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town fix, vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight, as amended and as appropriated in this warrant.
Motion is made and seconded with regard to Article twenty. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion?
Hi, Pat the Long, Hash Street. Could you explain what the fix for the salaries and compensation is and how much it is?
Ms. Liscio. Mr. Sheehan.
We can keep passing it down, but I don't know the council has the answer. The, the actual salaries are set in the budget, but as a procedural matter, under, under the Massachusetts general laws, we have to, to vote this wording every year. The salaries for elected officials are set by town meeting, even though they're reflected in the, in the operating budget. The only, I believe the only official that collects a salary is the town clerk. The only elected official, that is.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion on Article twenty. Any further questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article twenty-one, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury the sum of seventy-one thousand dollars to fund weekly collection of recyclable household materials, such appropriation to be contingent on the passage of an override pursuant to Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, or take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Liscio.
I move that the town vote to take no action.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to take no action on Article twenty-one. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion?
Hi, excuse me, Jim Laqueer, one seventy-one Pittsburgh Road, member of the Board of Health. As you know, in July, July first, we're going to be owing to a sixty-four gallon limit for weekly trash, and we are continuing the program for recycling. With the new events going on in the town, the school, et cetera, and people having to come down to the two-bag limit, if you go with the two-bag limit, we have purple bags available that can be purchased at various locations in town. The purpose of this is to emphasize to everybody in town that the recycling program is a must. It's necessary. And by going to the weekly recycling, we're going to be lowering our tipping fees as we go, paying by the ton to get rid of our actual trash. The recycling is a different program. Sometimes we even make money on the recycling. When the July first comes and you go down to your two-bag limit, you're going to become very discouraged in many ways. By doing the weekly recycling, you're going to be able to dispose of all the stuff that you sometimes wouldn't be disposing of in the trash opposed to recycling it. This goes all the way down to milk containers, sour cream containers, things that'll tend to also stink, et cetera, in the summertime. And the, the weekly recycling would be a big benefit to the town. The number is seventy-one thousand, but if you do the math, it comes out to eighty-eight cents a household weekly. And I don't think you can go wrong with that. But remember, I've given you a heads up that this is what's going to take place in town, and this is, it should take some due thought and consideration to go and allow us to make the efforts to make this all work and run smoothly.
Comment comes as part of the motion to take no action on Article twenty-one. Any further comments or questions with regard to that motion? There appear to be none. All those in favor of taking no action on Article twenty-one, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article twenty-two, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate eleven million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring a certain parcel of land by gift purchase or eminent domain, said land being a portion of Assessors Map eighteen, block sixty-five, lot zero, as shown on a sketch plan on file in the office of the town clerk, and designing and building a new central fire headquarters to replace the buildings at four sixty Main Street, eight Elm Street, thirteen Elm Street, and two seventy-two Rear Main Street, and as funding therefore to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum and issue bonds and notes therefore, or take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion?
William Elliott, New Pittsburgh Road. I move that the town appropriate eleven million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars paid a cost of acquiring a certain parcel of land by gift purchase or eminent domain, said land being a portion of Assessors Map eighteen, block sixty-five, lot zero, as shown on the sketch plan on file in the office of the town clerk, for general municipal purposes, including designing, constructing, originally equipping, and furnishing a new central fire headquarters to replace the buildings at four sixty Main Street, eight Elm Street, thirteen Elm Street, and two seventy-two Rear Main Street. And for payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow said amount under the pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section seven point three of the general law, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. No amounts shall be borrowed or expended hereunder unless and until the town shall have voted to exclude the amounts required to repay any borrowing hereunder from the limitations on total property taxes imposed by Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C. of the general laws, Proposition Two and a Half.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded with regard to Article twenty-two. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? Mr. D'Angelo.
Where is that land that they intend to build this new fire station?
Mr. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, we have a presentation that we would like to present to the body here tonight, if we can so do so.
You may.
Also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Elliott, who is the chairman of the building committee, and there are several other members here in the room this evening. Captain Mike Grimley, firefighter Brett King, firefighter James Normington, as well as a gentleman from the consulting firm that we use, Todd Coster from Castle and Booze. If I could have a few minutes to get set up too, please? Just to give you a little bit of history, this is a project that the, that the fire department and the community has been working on for almost eighteen years. Back in the early to mid-eighties, we identified that we had a problem. We had some new trucks come in, three of them actually, all within a period of a year. Once we got them here, we found that the buildings that we had, which were built in the eighteen seventy-five timeframe, could not accommodate them. So we had to go in and we had to drop floors and do a few other things. And unfortunately, it started to undermine some of the buildings that were built on fieldstone foundations. In the mid-nineties, the Board of Selectmen decided it was time to, we should look at either upgrading or replacing the buildings. They commissioned a study to be done, and that study was presented in nineteen ninety-six. In that study, it was recommended that two out of the three buildings be replaced, and the third one either be replaced or, if possible, remodeled. Funding was approved at the town meeting that year for a sum of, I believe it was eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, to build the current harbor station. It took us another eight years to get to the point where we actually could build the project. We went out to bid twice on it, and unfortunately, both times it came in well over a million dollars, and it, we didn't have the appropriate... dollars, and it, we didn't have the appropriations to move forward. It was with the generosity of a couple of businessmen in town that land for that station was donated, as along with the site work that was done. We did finally go out and in 2003, they got a bid to do a design-build, and we were able to accomplish the feat of getting the harbor station built, and that opened in 2004. Several chiefs since that time had come up with plans to go to the next phase, which was to replace the center station. Unfortunately, due to a number of things, that didn't take place, but we had purchased the property that we had hoped to build the center station on. And in 2007, when I became chief, I took the project on and started down that road again, and we started looking at what we needed to do next. I went to the board and requested to have another committee assembled of people from the committee, the community, from a department head and from the fire department, to look at a needs analysis as to what our central headquarters should look like. That was done, unfortunately, along the way, the recession hit us, and a number of other things that came up, and it became very obvious as we were going forward that building two stations or building one and renovating a third wasn't going to work. There was a number of things that happened at the federal level in that the DOT passed a regulation that now all diesel had to meet environmental protection standards, which you have had in your cars for several decades now, and that they had to have some kind of a catalytic converting system. Unfortunately, what that did is it made the trucks a little bit taller, a little bit wider, and it eliminated us from using the west station in the future as a fire station because we can't expand that building any further than what it is today. We made that presentation to the board in 2009. In 2009, and it was our recommendation at that time that we start to look at consolidating the buildings. Again, we were unfortunately still in a recession, and the board at the time didn't feel it was the appropriate time to move forward on that. And it was finally in 2012 that we, we looked at it again, and the recommendation was that we should go out and bring in a consulting firm to help look at what we needed to do, and to come up with a, a plan as to what that new building would look like. The problems we're trying to solve, and I've hoped that a number of you have had the opportunity to look at the film that we've done, it has played on the access channels, Channel 8 and Channel 9 for the last month, and it was also shown, I believe, last fall on those channels. And that kind of outlined a lot of the major problems that we have with those, those buildings, most of which is the buildings are too small. They were never designed to hold the fire trucks that we have in there today. They're very narrow, there's not enough, a lot of room. We back the apparatus into the, the older stations, in particular, we have about an inch and a half clearance on either side. One of the problems that we had with the center station at one time is that in the summertime, if the tires heated up, we had to sit on the ramp to wait to back the truck in because we took the lights off the back of the truck one day because the tires had expanded to the point where we actually were hitting the door. When we went out to purchase our latest ladder truck, we were limited on the vendors that we could talk to because they had to meet a certain length and a certain height and certain width for the tri, the truck, because we didn't have a station big enough to put it in. When it got here, we actually had the engineer and the sales rep here as we backed the truck in, just to make sure that the truck was going to fit, because they, they weren't even sure. And we do, we did get it in the building. We have approximately, I believe it is three inches off the back wall. We have approximately two and a half inches off the front, and we have to line the center of the ladder up between the door, automatic door motor, and make sure that it runs between the ladder, because if it goes to either side, we'll take the motor for the door off We also have, if anybody, we had a tour of the buildings here several weeks ago. Unfortunately, not a lot of people came out to view them, but if you saw the videos, you'll see that a lot of our HV systems and heating systems are way outdated. We've tried to do some upgrades through grants that we've, we've gotten, but you can only do so much to an 1875 building that was never designed to hold the type of equipment that we have in it today. The other is that, one, we want to work on our apparatus, and we try to do as much as we possibly can to repair our own vehicles without having to send it out to a, to a licensed dealer to take care of, because it is very expensive, and none of them are in the local area. So, and when we go to do that, we can't do it at the older stations. We have to actually go down to the harbor, and we have to pull out the trucks down there to work on any of the other vehicles. That's fine in the summer, but in the wintertime, I have to, when I pull my apparatus out, the engines have to sit outside and they have to run the entire time we're there, because I can't afford to let them sit idle because the pumps will freeze up in the cold weather. And that's, and if I, you notice here this evening, when we have any kind of a function here where there's a large gathering, I have to take my equipment out of this building's behind here and move them across the street or down to my headquarters, because I, I, we can't get them out of here. If anybody remembers the evening that we had the vote for Senator several years ago, and when Senator Kennedy died, we actually had a fire call in the middle of the vote that was going on, and we couldn't get our apparatus out of, out of the parking lot. Never mind get our apparatus out, I couldn't get my people into, in here to get the apparatus out. So we're, we're beyond the point of trying to do something with what we had, and we're, we now are trying to do consolidation. One of the things that we looked at as we were, were going through the process is that the operational cost of running five buildings is exceedingly expensive, and it's not going to get any cheaper. There's only so much we can do to the older buildings. We've done as much as we possibly can, but I'm still seeing a dramatic increase in my energy costs for these buildings. So we, we, we did a needs analysis, and what we did is, it was three things that we focused on. One is, what is it we actually truly need today for a fire station? We needed to be able to consolidate all of the equipment and offices, and bring them into one location, and give us the room around those apparatus to do the work on, especially in the wintertime when we, we come back from a fire, we've got to load hose and stuff. In the older buildings, we can't do it there. We have to, again, we have to go down to the, to the harbor and do it down there. The other is that we're lacking a lot of storage. We, like anything else, we have to have, there's certain storage that we have to have for our smaller equipment that we use on a daily basis. We don't have it, we actually have them spread out all over the place. So we have to remember where that equipment is when we want to use it. The other is that I have to store a lot of data information, a lot of hard copy information, not only for the EMS side of the department, but as for the fire. We're trying to automate, and we've done quite a bit of that over the last few years, and we will continue to do that over the next five or ten years as we try to implement some of those things, but I still have required to keep certain documents, some for life, some for ten years, some for only seven years, but I have no place to keep documentation. Right now, when we get past a two-year mark, we box them up, we put them in boxes, we mark them, and we look for storage areas throughout the town. I have some in the old bank building, I have them stored in the attics of different stations. So I have to remember where they are whenever somebody comes to my building and looks for information from, on a historical nature, and we do a lot of that, more than I thought we would, especially for some of our commercial buildings that get sold in town. So we're looking to increase our storage capabilities in our office area. The other is that we, we will look, we needed to be able to do some training and stuff. We have a small training facility, but there are things out there for us as a, as a department that we can't avail ourselves up because we don't have the facilities to do that. One of them is on the medical side, not a lot of training is offered by the state for free. There are a lot of companies that are licensed to do that, but it's very expensive. If you have a training site that's large enough to hold it, the companies that come in will actually give you free chairs, what they call chairs, which is a, a student comes in and gets that training for free. So in some cases, I can save thousands of dollars in training just on one student alone, and, and more than likely, what usually happens is I get usually two seats. So that means two students can, I can get trained, and it doesn't cost me a thing. But I can't hold those types of trainings because I don't have a large enough facility to do that. Also, the state offices, office training, they offer at the academy, and that's great, but that means I have to send my department either in piecemeal or as a whole to Stowe to get those kinds of training. I needed a facility here where I can bring in training from the academy, offered here, but when we do that, we, we have to open it up so that it's available to other communities around us. And to do that, we have to be able to fit a minimum number of students. So that was one. The other thing we were looking is, is if you looked at the current stations, the footprint they're on is the, is basically the land that, that they're under. There's no room for expansion, the stations have no room for expansion within the buildings themselves. So what the other key goal we were looking at as we went out to do this is that the station and the land that we looked at has to be able to expand for the future. I can generally say, tell you what our needs are today and probably into the foreseeable future. I can't tell you what those needs are going to be twenty years from today, thirty years from today. So you need to have the ability for the town to be able to expand on the site where they are without having to go out and rebuild or find additional land in the future. And the third thing that we had to look at was, was a time. What, what is our, our turnout time? We have certain standards that we, as a department, have to meet that are required by the NFPA and the ISO, and those are the standards that we have to, to go by. And for a department of our size and, and type, which we're called a combination department, is that we have a six-minute window to a ten-minute window, depending on the apparatus that we're going out. And a six-minute, I have to be able to get a person to the station, and I have to get an apparatus to a, a site in six minutes. So we had a, to look at some time thing, analysis, and thanks to the people at Castle Booze, they, they put that analysis together for us. What you're seeing here is our current facilities. We have five buildings today. We have the, the new station in the harbor, which will remain, and then we have the central station here, one, is actually today, because it's, because of the, the width of the building and the size of our trucks today, we can only use our forestry trucks out of there. Even our ambulance is no longer fit in the building. The building, we call the garage at the town hall, that's where a majority of our central apparatus is located. We have an engine, a ladder, our secondary ambulance is out of there, and some smaller equipment. The building below that is our central headquarters, and I run another ambulance out of there at the present time. And then the west station, we have an engine and a tanker. Those are the four buildings that we're looking to consolidate. And if you looked at the center of the, the picture, you'll see a sort of a pink box with a blue arrow. That's our target area. That, based on the timeout, turnout time that Castle Booze provided for us, is the optimum location for us to put a building. So with that in mind, we started looking for land. Unfortunately, the land that was available wasn't all clear to, to purchase. One that would have been the optimum site, the gentleman did not want to sell it to us. And the only way that we could go after that land was to take it by eminent domain. So we looked at another site that was becoming available, and there were actually two lots. One was up for sale, and one was in bankruptcy court. The people that had the site that was for sale unfortunately weren't willing to wait until the town approved the project, and the one that's in bankruptcy is actually still in bankruptcy and has been for the last three years. So we went on to a third alternative that we had. Unfortunately, that one turned out to be on the opposite side of the MBTA, and after consultation with our law firm, it was, we could have gone for the site, but it would have taken quite a bit of time and quite a bit of financial resources to work with the MBTA to get a right of way to, to go across it. So we looked at a fourth site. Unfortunately, the fourth site that was, came up was where the current baseball fields are behind Spalding School. And as a parent, at the time, and knowing a lot of other parents, I didn't think that that was the appropriate site, given the fact that we are always looking for different fields for our children to have their sports activities at, and I didn't think that would go over well with the community. A gentleman that owns the golf course, I approached him about a year and a half ago, and I asked if he would be willing to sell some land that he had up there that they weren't using on the golf course. It was just a, a plot of land that they would use to store materials that they would use out on the course. He said that he wasn't interested in selling the land, but since it was for a fire station, he would work with us, and he went to his mortgage company that holds the, the paper on the property, and they were, are in agreement that they would sell if the town approved the project. But the stipulation was that they wanted to sell the whole six acres, and they would break it off from the rest of the golf course. We went up, we took a look at the site, and we said, this is the perfect location. It's not absolutely perfect, it's not right on Main Street, but it's a workable site for the fire station. We then proceeded to work with Castle Booze and a, their architectural firm that they work with, Mitchell Associates, and we came up with a plan of what the station would look like, and we've gone through many, many iterations of what that, that station would look like, and we came up with a couple of options. As we went, worked through those options, we always kept the one thing in our mind is that we needed to bring this project in at as a lower price as we possibly could. At one point, we even looked at what, if we went out and we built two stations, which would require buying two pieces of lot, excuse me, lands. And unfortunately, that came in at a higher price than what we were already looking at for this project. So we decided that, that to move forward with our first option, which was to build one station and consolidate four buildings into it. The other goal that we had is we wanted to make sure that this was a modern facility that fit, it fit in with the town decor. And as we worked with Castle Booze, they came up with a conceptual design, I think, that fit well within the way that the community is today, and... So what we have here is kind of a conceptual idea of what the building would look like. One of, and we keep, as I said, we keep refining this to, to help try to keep the cost down as much as we possibly can. So what we have here is that everything you see in pink is what we call the fire department or their, the, the fire base workshops. or their, their, the, the fire, uh, uh, bays, workshops, storage areas, anything to do with, uh, fighting fires or medical, um, medical, uh, responses. The gray areas are things from within the building that are mandatory that we have. They're mechanical, the bathrooms, and there's certain codes that we have to meet, um, that require certain things. And so those are all built in there. And what, well, the other goal we were trying to do is to, so that we wouldn't have to put an elevator in this building, because that is very costly as well, is that we wanted to make sure that everything that, where the general public would, uh, be coming into the building was always on the first floor. This is a two-story building, and I, when I'll, we get to the second one in a, in a minute. Um, the purple, uh, that you see here is the office areas, and that is offices for, um, medical staff, the offices for fire inspection, the chief's office, off of, the office for, um, our, my officers. Um, there's a conference room that we can bring, um, contractors and people that bring plans for us to review can come in and we can lay them out. Um, there's an administrative office. Um, there's also, um, a, an, uh, um, an area for, um, all of the files and things that we have to keep paper copies for. The yellow area is what we call the public space. Uh, and the reason I'm calling that the public space is that this is, uh, an area we can use for multiple purposes. The, uh, it can be used as my training area so that I can have classrooms, um, hands-on training for medical personnel. It is also, can be used, uh, by our, um, emergency management organization. Uh, we're, we're always looking for a place for when we have, uh, natural disasters to have a, a, a location where we're close to communications and that we can bring people like the fire department, the, you know, medical staff, police department, highway, uh, the board of selectmen or outside agencies into, to run a, um, emergency situation. Things like the ice storm, where we had people in here for, uh, almost two solid weeks. Uh, we needed a location, and we, unfortunately, Irv's has, has a room, but it's, it's, it's kind of small, and we couldn't get everybody in there all at the same time. This would give us that ability. And, and believe me, over the last several years, um, we could have used it on numerous This is the second floor, and the reason that this is all in pink or gray is that this is fire spa, firefighter space. And because all, it's mainly for firefighters and medical personnel, we are not required by the, um, Disability Act to have a elevator or some kind of methodology to get handicapped people to the second floor. Um, one of the things that we worked with Castle Booze on is that we, on our first iteration, if you can see, there's like a little bump out on the left-hand side, um, on the first floor, that was storage areas, and we worked with them to bring that into the building to help try to cut down on the, uh, cost of the building. Um, this is just kind of a site layout, and that's based on generally what the site would look like. Um, the station here with, um, parking on both sides, one would be strictly for fire, and the other side would be for fire and visitor personnel, and plus a turnaround ramp for the, the back. The bays, the way that the bays are designed, they're drive-through bays. They allow, on a drive-through bay, it allows us to, um, change the configuration of how we park our vehicles in the building over time. So as our equipment changes, we get newer trucks, or our mission changes and we pick up a different vehicle, we can change the way we put the vehicles in the building without having to change the building itself. And now I probably, this is probably, this is what the, um, kind of generally what the building would look like. Uh, again, this is just a conceptual plan. Uh, if we go out to design, or we go out to a design-build, this may change, uh, but we'll try to keep it so that it fits within the, the scope of what the community looks like. Bill. And this is the, the workup, and, um, if there's any questions around how this was put together, um, I am going to ask Todd to help me out on his, because he worked with us quite extensively on this project for the last two years. Uh, but the bottom line, project number, and I want to make, stress that, this is a project number, is eleven million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We do not feel that we will spend that amount of money. The reason that we, it is high is because we have built numerous contingencies into the plan. One of the problems when we, with the harbor station that I'm trying to make sure it doesn't happen here is that we didn't plan well enough for the building. And when we went out to bid, we didn't have enough money to bill what we needed. Um, so what, um, what we tried to do with this is we tried to build in contingencies into areas where we thought we would have a problem. One of those contingencies was in the cost of the land. I can't tell you today until we actually sit down with them and work out a, a, a price for the land, what that's going to cost. I have a general idea of what the value is, and I've worked with the assessor on this, the general id, value of the assessed land. And this is only, not working it through any kind of algorithms, but generally speaking, we feel the land is worth approximately, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand. It may be a little more, it may be a little less. We're not quite sure until we actually go down and bid, um, with them. The other is the site work. Um, we don't know if, what's underneath the, the land, if it's perkable, but what we have done is we've walked the, the site. I walked the site with the conservation agent and the land use coordinator, and we did not see anything on the site, and I will ask them to say anything if they so choose, um, that would indicate that we would have a problem. We also, um, spoke to the abutters, one of which is the golf course. And of course, they have no problems. They're, they're, they have plenty of drainage on their, on the golf course. I talked to the gentleman that just purchased the, uh, JCA building, which is, um, now a storage company, and he's, his site, um, he did not have any problem with his site when he was, uh, looking to purchase the building. And I, Mr. King, um, that owns King's Farm next door, his son is actually on the committee, and he said that there's not a problem on the opposite side where the King Farm is. So generally speaking, we feel that the site is going to be a very viable site. So those, we, we don't feel that we're going to spend all of that money that we have in there, but that we have money in case there is a problem. The other area that we build contingencies in, is in the price of construction. I can't tell you until we physically go out to co, to bid, what that price is going to be. Uh, Castle Booze helped work through that, now, through those numbers, and based on history and what they've worked with, uh, with other contractors and other similar buildings of this type, um, they were, felt pretty comfortable that this would, if we came in, if we went out to bid within a, a certain period of time, that this price might be a little lower. But again, we don't know until we physically go out to bid. One of the things that we're looking at is going to do what they call a, um, design-build, sorry. And, uh, on the design-build, instead of having an architect firm do the, uh, design of the building, you leave that up to the, uh, contractor to have his designers design the building. But there's a risk to that. One, and to help offset that risk means that, that we as a community would have to hire a project manager early on in the process to help us put together the bid specs. Because one of the things that you don't want to happen is to let the contractor make a decision on what that building is going to look like or have in it, and then not meet what you need. Um, and I, and I know Brett is here somewhere in the room tonight, and, um, he's very familiar with, with that concept. What does this do to the taxes? If we were to spend the entire eleven-three, we are looking at approximately a cost of two hundred and forty-two dollars a year on our taxes. That's about twenty dollars and seventeen cents per month. And working with our account accountant, uh, we felt pretty, pretty safe that this would still hold true today. Um, and it's like a two and a half percent interest that we're looking at. Do I believe that this is going to be, uh, what you're going to have to spend? Again, as I said, no, I don't. I believe that we'll actually come in below that, but the sooner we go out to bid and the sooner that we go out and get this project done, the more likely it is we will not hit that number. The longer we wait, the more confident I feel that you're going to hit that number. So like the schools, this is a project number. And it, and it is our hope, and we'll continue to work on bringing that down as we go forward. And that, that, that's what I, all I have, and I'll, uh, answer any questions. Okay.
Thank you, Chief. That was a lot to digest. Any questions or comments?
Uh, there we go. Two switches. Can't do one, one switch. I do agree, we do need fire stations. What I don't agree with is Scales Lane. Scales Lane's a dead-end road. The road sees anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five trailer trucks a day going in and out of Sterlite. On the weekends, there's a large number of automobiles, up to three hundred at times, in and out to the golf course. If we're going to build an eleven-point-three-million-dollar monument for our retired chief, we should build it out where it can be seen. We should put it on 119 if possible, or tear down the buildings where they have them now, put a station there, tear down the West Townsend Station and Legion Hall, and put another station there. Thank you.
Comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 22.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I took the time out to go up to the Selectment's Office, in which there was a colored brochure, basically the way this is, except there was a page here that's missing. And on that page was an indication of another one-point-two, one-point-three million, in addition to the eleven-three that they were asking for, for certain facilities or amenities that they were going to add to that fire station, one of which was a communication system. Does that still hold true, or we just forget about that?
Mr. Klein.
Um, the one that you're talking about, that was Option 2. Option 2 was an additional, uh, one-point-two million to, uh, build a west, a station in West Townsend, buying-
No, that was, that was additional monies. I think it was for, uh, bunk beds and a combination sort of things-
No, not in, not in any plan that we've had.
So we're not going to build a new communication station there?
No, we have a backup communications for the central communications. We have that right now in our harbor station, and the plan is to move it out of there because it's in a room that's too small. But outside of that, uh, that is already planned into that eleven-three-
You're going to move it out of there, but you're not going to put it in a new station?
Please, please, one at a time. This isn't a junning, running debate between the two of you.
We're, as part of the eleven-three, there is a section for the communications backup center, which currently resides in my harbor station. Because it's a very small area that we have it in, we're going to move it to this, to the new building, but it's no additional funds. It's already included in that project number.
Comments come as part of the discussion.
A quick question. Can I ask the Finance Committee why they're not recommending this, please?
Ms. King?
Basically, we didn't, we didn't take a, we took a voice vote the other night, and we voted, we all voted unanimously not to recommend this. We did not document any particular reason, but generally, uh, the, the amount of money, the, the, basically, the impact on the taxpayers for the eleven million.
Question or comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 22. Any further questions or comments? Yes. First gentleman with the hat.
I wonder if you could elaborate a bit on these, uh, design, engineering contingencies, about a million bucks without a lot of information contained in those few words. Plus, there's another eight-hundred thousand for the architect and engineering services anyway. So please expand on that.
Chief?
Mr. Maher, if I could, I'd like to, um, have Mr. Costa answer that question, because he helped put these numbers together.
Uh, does the floor want to hear from a visitor to help us with this, uh, discussion? Be our guest.
Hi, Todd Costa from Castle Booze and Associates, I'm a project architect that's been working with the Building Committee, uh, on behalf of the, the station. The contingencies that you're looking at, the, uh, start with the top-line item, with the design estimating contingency. Because of the level these documents are, uh, put to at this point in time, there's a lot of information that our estimation company does not have, that they have to infer. So we need, we have a design contingency inside of that, inside of that. Uh, a lot of the mechanical systems and things like that are based on a square foot number without detailed information provided to the estimator. Um, underneath that, the, uh, architect, architecture and engineering fees, that's based on a, um, a professional standard of nine percent of the construction cost, uh, or basically our company or, and our consultants to continue on. Uh, as part of the project funding amount, the state requires you to get a project manager fee, which is also included in that, uh, a couple of line items down, which is the three and a half percent. The owner's contingency is at the bottom, that is a contingency line item that will not change throughout the duration of the project. What that is there for is, um, for any unforeseen, or, yeah, any unforeseen issues that may arise, like if we go to get a geotechnical report on the soils and they find a massive amount of rock or, uh, unsuitable soils that would have to be removed, that is to account for the unforeseen conditions of the site because we did not have a site or, um, the technical information relative to that site.
Comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 22. Gentleman right here.
I'm Pete Dux, and I live up on New Pittsburgh Road. And a question I got for the chief is, anybody approached the town about widening Scales Lane to meet the needs of the fire department? And has anybody approached the state to talk about entering that road onto the state highway? Has a set of plans been made? And who's paying for it?
Questions come as part of the discussion. Questions come as part of the discussion. Chief.
We went up and looked at the road. The current road meets the, our, the standards that we need. I know people think that it's, it's small, but because of all the, the truck traffic that currently resides there, we've been up and down that road and we've taken measurements and it's no different than any other, the road that we currently have to take our apparatus over within the community. As far as approaching the state, no, we have not approached the state about that. That's one of the contingencies that we're still going to have to look at. Currently, I've talked to a number of other communities that had the same problem that we have, coming off of, of another road onto a main highway. And what they've done is work with the state to put in a set of lights that are operated by the communication center, which would require putting what they call an optocom system in. But we have not looked at anything like that as yet. We don't anticipate having to have that intersection widened, but I need to talk to, or somebody from the committee needs to talk to the state to find out what their plans are. I know that there is a plan to come in and do some resurfacing of the road. Exactly when they're going to be doing that, I don't know, but we'd like to, to work with them so that it's included in their plans as they go forward.
Question and comments come as part of the discussion. This gentleman first.
For, for the chief, have you looked at with your meeting room in the, the second floor that has the, the fire, the fire station specific personnel rooms and stuff? I know Chelmsford was able to cut a significant portion off by using it as a regional training room. And I, I can't remember the acronym of, of the agency they went through, but it was a regional emergency management one. You might want to look at doing that because it did cut out, I mean, they, their station came in, I think, at 7.9. So, and I know they have a whole second floor training facility. So, just so you can think of that.
We hadn't looked about that, but that, what that room is on the first floor, because the second floor has, has no training facilities whatsoever on it. This crew quarter's upstairs, yes. And, and I'm familiar with the Chelmsford Station. I talked to your previous chief down in Chelmsford as we were going through the process. Their building is somewhat smaller. They're combining, I believe, it's either one or two stations into that. And I have, and I think it was, I think he said four to six vehicles that are, that are going in. Five? Well, we, we have 10, 10 vehicles. So our building's a little bit bigger. So from a cost perspective, that's why there's, there's such a difference. I have compared myself to a number of other stations in the area and based on what they're doing and what their final figures came in as, that's why I'm saying that the, while we have a project number, and the project number is relatively high, and I agree it's relatively high, we're, we feel very confident if we move forward today that that, we'll never hit that number. It's going to be much lower than that. I can't tell you today what it's going to be. I know that Grotton came in at 10.4 for their building and it's, it's slightly smaller than what we're looking at. I know they're having some other issues over there with, with their contractor, but I know what they came in at. And then there are several other fire departments that have built stations within the last 18 months. And I've been in contact with those chiefs and their building committees. And I think there's one in Westboro that's, that's just started. He and I have had conversations back and forth for the last few months about how they're going about it, what they're doing. And we've tried to incorporate some of the things that they've done, as well as some of the problems that they faced into our project, so that we don't face the same problems and that we're taking advantage of some of the things that they've learned from their projects.
Mr. Buzwanger.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chief and everybody, I, I appreciate where you're coming from and I, I, I know that you need a new station, a couple new stations. But I, I have a couple, I have a few issues. First off, Scales Lane is, in my opinion, it's just the wrong spot. I think you need, not one, I think you need two stations. I think that the, having it on Scales Lane and having it in the back of Scales Lane is the wrong place. It needs to be out on Main Street. When you have call firefighters that have to come from various locations to make that swing going into Scales Lane and then bringing a ladder truck and a pump and a, and a tanker and then bringing them out, you're going to have the possibility of a collision to come out of there and then come around that corner and bringing a ladder truck out of there. And then to make that swing out onto 119 is going to be an issue. Something is going to happen and it's going to be bad. It will happen and it's going to happen. You talk about that corner, that's a residential house that's on that corner. And that, and you say you want to widen that corner, well, then buy that house. Buy that house and take that whole corner. You want to put lights in there and widen that house, then buy that person's house. Ask them about buying that house if you're going to do something like that. Scales Lane is full of trucks. If you put two or three tractor trailers that are coming out of Scales Lane and then you have a call and that ladder and that pump and everything has to come out of there and now you've got to pass that ladder truck to come out onto Scales Lane and now a car is coming in there, you're bottlenecked to come out of there, there's no room. It's not going to happen. Somebody's going to end up in Yee's Village. I'm sorry, but that's the way I feel. If you take your, your center station and you cut it down and if you have to take your station and move it over to the property that's next to you and, and take that by eminent domain, do so. Make your station smaller. Take the west station that's down in there now and take your engine company that's down there and put, ask Mr. Amadon if he can take his truck and put it into his garage like you did for a couple of years while that bridge was out. And flatten that station. Ask the American Legion if that's the place can, flattened until you can rebuild and put a new station there. And put it there. I think that would be a good way because I think you're, you're leaving West Townsend uncovered. The people all the way out in Vinton Pond, out in that area, I think they're being slighted. Honestly do. I think the west, I think the harbor fire station, you say that it was a little bit short on money, let's throw a few hundred thousand more into it. You, you built it for 900 grand. That was a nice station. It still is. It was downstairs, it was supposed to be bedrooms, never really get developed into the bedrooms it was supposed to be, but it's with hoses, it's built, loaded with lots of stuff because you have no other place to put it. But it can be developed the way it's supposed to be. But I just think that that's the way it should have gone. The FinCom has said, no, we don't support this. It is too much money. $11 million is a lot and we don't even know how much the land is going to be. We're going to buy something tonight that we don't know how much we're going to spend. I think we have a problem. I like something that I know what I'm going to pay for. And all of the, I have too many questions that I think is wrong.
Ms. Marano. Wait, we'll get your, we'll get your microphone.
Sit on. As much as I like a new fire station in town, and I do support a new fire station, and I know we need one, just like we needed a new high school. What did we pay for our high school? That's going to add $159 per thousand on your evaluations. Now, we're going to add another 242,000, 100, yeah, $242 per thousand. That's over $400 per year on your assessed value. Your property value now might be down a little bit, but our tax rate has gone up. If our property value goes up, maybe our tax rate goes down a little bit. But $11.3 million with a lot of unanswered questions. And I particularly would like to know about the land. And I also would like to know what the town's going to do with all this land and the buildings that are left on the land that are empty and we're not using and we're letting them go into the ground. We need a plan to do something with those buildings. Whether we tear them down and sell them to somebody that might be interested in buying, we need a plan for that, too. I agree with the Finance Committee that we should not do it at this time until we have more concrete, what it's going to cost per square foot, what the land value is going to be, and site development. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Keith Luttrell from Main Street. Just question if, are we, has this property been perked yet? And we probably ought to do a traffic study, have the state do us a traffic study, see if it's feasible.
Questions come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 22. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Chief. Be brief.
No, we have not perked. We have not done anything with the land except talk to the gentleman. There is, understand that there's two things that we're trying to avoid. I do not want, and I know that the Capitol Committee has requested that I buy the land and do the site work first, with no guarantees that we're going to build a fire station. Well, there's two things wrong with that. I, for one, have an agreement with this lady over here. I don't want to buy another piece of land and sit on it. All you have to do is go out your back door over here and look at a piece of property that you bought to put a parking lot in that you haven't built yet. That was 10 years ago. So, and the second thing is, the gentleman doesn't plan on selling that property or dividing it up from his current lots until he knows that the, the town is going to move ahead with a project. If the, if for some reason we find that the, the property doesn't perk, we don't move ahead with the project. But I'm pretty confident that it's going to perk. The other thing is that there's a cost to the gentleman that owns it to break this away. He has to assume a cost to, to break this six parcel off from the rest of his, from his land holding. He doesn't want to incur that cost until he knows that, that we're serious about moving ahead with a project. So from, and believe me, I, I've looked at a number of options. It's not like I haven't looked at a lot of options. The, the other option we looked at was building two stations. Buying the Legion Hall, putting a building up there. The minimum cost that we're looking at for the land and for building the station is 1.3 million to 1.4 million dollars. That's what it's going to cost you. And that's a smaller substation than the one we currently have in the harbor. We looked at what we could do here with the current property. Unfortunately, the town went out and bought a piece of property to put a building up without knowing what they needed for square footage. You've got approximately a half an acre lot. I need at least a minimum of 1.7 acres to build a center station only. 1.7. So I've approached another gentleman that owns a piece of property on the other side of Dunkin' Donuts and about acquiring that property. He does not want to sell it because he has plans to develop the property. So I'm back to square one. There's not a lot of land on Main Street. I did not want to put this on Scales Lane. I am forced to find a location within my target area that is accessible. And Scales Lane happened to be the only thing that I could find where somebody was willing to sell me the property. If the town is willing to go eminent domain, I know a perfect piece that we can go for, but it means taking the property by eminent domain. And I look back in history and what this town has done with eminent domain questions, they've never passed one. Never. So I don't see a lot of, of support within the community for doing that kind of thing either. So I'm, I'm at a loss. I mean, I'm willing to look at anything, but we're, we're running out of time. I've got stations that, within the next five years, West Station is going to close and you aren't going to even have a West Station.
Chief, we're running out of time tonight, too. Yes, sir, in the back.
Chief, just one question. Would you geo survey that land before we bought it? Check for ledge? Would that be done before, because we don't want to buy something for a ledge?
Absolutely. Anything that's required of us to buy that land, we would do before we buy it.
Move the question.
Motion has been made to move the question and it's seconded. It's not debatable. Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We're ready to vote. Does anyone want to hear the motion read again? All right. All those in favor of the motion on Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no.
No.
Would have required a two-thirds vote. So it does not carry. Article 23. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds in the treasury, such sums as may be necessary to fund capital improvements and/or capital equipment for fiscal year 2015 pursuant to a detailed budget to be presented to the town meeting totaling an amount to be inserted or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McNabb.
I move that the town appropriate the following sums to pay costs for various capital improvements and/or capital equipment for fiscal year 2015 as set forth in a detailed capital budget presented to this meeting and as funded for said capital improvements and equipment. Repurpose $6,343 for cardiac monitors appropriated at the May 2013 annual town meeting. Appropriate from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation the sum of $54,792. Appropriate from water enterprise retained earnings the sum of $50,000. And appropriate the sum of $729,285. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the selectmen, is authorized to borrow a set amount under the pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article 23. Is there, as part of this package, a detailed budget of these capital items? Good.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. It's the beige paper in the packet.
Does everyone have the beige paper?
Off-white, I stand corrected.
Do they all have the off-white capital budget? And are these numbers recited that you have just read on this off-white sheet?
The numbers are the same in the packet.
Okay. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion on Article 23? Yes, all the way in the back.
I'm very confused on the numbers that were given considering that the article says that it's for fiscal year 15 and the numbers add up to an awful lot more than what's listed here for fiscal year 15.
I'm similarly situated. Mr. McNabb, I have the sheet now for Article 23. And the numbers that you were moving, is there a particular column they all came from?
It's the columns on the right where it says FY 2015 Board of Selectmen recommended.
And it's the, the one under available funds or the one under the borrow funds?
If I could, Mr. Moderator.
If you would.
Under the, in the motion, the first bullet was repurpose $6,343 for cardiac monitors. That is reflected about a third of the way down in the, in the right-hand column under available funds. That is money that was previously appropriated for a capital purchase. available funds. That is money that was previously appropriated for a capital purchase. The purchase came in at less than expected, and so we are repurposing that, that amount. We can't use, when we appropriate a sum of money for a capital purpose and we don't need it all, we can't just use it for something else without coming back to town meeting. So, that's the first piece of it. Appropriate from ambulance receipts, the sum of $54,792.
So, so can we stop there? Because that, that's the problem I have with this motion. It's all over the place. I, I, I agree with Mrs. Thorpe. I, I couldn't follow the motion, and now that I see the sheet, it's not adding any detail that helps me understand it as it was read.
Meg?
I don't know.
Maybe if I can, maybe if I go through the whole thing, it'll, it'll become clearer?
I'm not sure. It's gotten pretty late tonight, and I really am concerned about the form of that motion. It, it almost has to be spoon-fed, and it's hard to discuss a motion like that. So... Are these combining things and then offering a borrowing resolution as part of it?
There, as there is every year with the capital article, the, the money comes, the monies come from a number of different sources. So, there is, there is the repurpose...
Let's, let's take a break here for a second. We're going to take about a five-minute recess till the moderator understands the motion.
Those first three add up to the 111, 135 here.
But what, what's the relationship of this last number?
Sorry?
The 729 that's on these forms.
Correct. Which is this number?
What's the, what's the value of this motion in totality?
It's to borrow 729.
I don't, I don't think that people understand that.
We can come up with a total if you'd like a total.
I'd like a better motion.
We, we use the format that we used in the past.
I only saw the, these motions, you know, today.
But it's very similar to the, to the motions that we've used in the past. The only difference is that it's a borrowing.
Yeah, I think that's a substantial difference.
Right. And then which is authorized in the warrant?
About a few, um...
I'm not so sure it is authorized in the warrant. When you read the warrant article, it's generic describing all the terms that these people are familiar with. This one ended, and I agree with Mrs. Thorpe, I'd like to see some clarity. Is any, are any of these funds already appropriated and not necessary to borrow?
The 111.
Yeah, everything other than the 729, it's not a borrowing.
Did you just answer the same, give me the same answer as he did?
Yeah. They're going to borrow 729. The 111 is already, exists other places, and it's being transferred either from these retained earnings.
So, what's the total value of this motion between the borrowing and the transferring?
Uh, eight...
To an end. Ready? Town meeting is being called back to order. Mr. McNabb.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to amend the motion.
Be my guest.
I move that the town appropriate $840,420, the following sums to pay the cost of various capital improvements and/or capital equipment for fiscal year 2015 as set forth in a detailed capital budget presented to this meeting. And to meet this appropriation as follows: Repurpose $6,343 for cardiac monitors appropriated at the May 2013 annual town meeting. Appropriate from ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation the sum of $54,792. Appropriate from water equipment retained earnings the sum of $50,000 and appropriate the sum of $729,285. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow a set amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore.
Motion has been made, or a motion to amend has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion to amend? Yes. We'll have a microphone brought over. Fred Thrasher.
What's the...
Mr. Moderator? Ah, yes, excuse me. What is the new total? The new total is...
The total for all projects is $840,420.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Yes, Mr. Forten. I will get you a microphone.
I'm, I'm confused as can be, and I depend on the Finance Committee. How do you feel about this motion?
Ms. King?
The motion itself sounded much clearer than the original one. If you're asking about what we thought about the, the, we did recommend this article. We did recommend the article.
Question and comment comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Any further questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Peduzzi.
Jeff Peduzzi, Scott Road. Ed just got done telling us what a mile of pavement costs. Why are we spending $185,000 on something to sweep up the potholes?
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Ms. Lysio?
Mr. Moderator, we need a new sweeper. And, and if we don't get one, we don't get anything swept. I suggested how much would brooms cost to give each household a broom to clean in front of their yards, but nobody wanted to do that. It's $185,000 for it. We also discussed, and I, I believe Mr. Kukula had looked into possibly paying someone to do it for us so that we didn't have to purchase it. It turned out that actually purchasing, purchasing the equipment was, was better. And Capital Planning is, has recommended it. They did it, they did a vetting of that, too.
Yes, Mr. Peduzzi.
This time of year, in my neighborhood, we're all out there with our own brooms and shovels because the, the trucks generally don't come down there very often. So, we're up there cleaning it up anyway. And I think filling some potholes is a little more important than sweeping up the sand. Unless you're going to repurpose the sand.
Mr. Kukula.
I just want to speak about the sweeper. Yes, it is expensive. It only gets used three or four months out of the year. It's in the worst conditions possible, other than when a, when a plow is used spreading salt with all that sand that is in the, in the gears, and it, it just wears the machine out. It's $1999. If we traded it in right now, it, it'd be worth about $5,000. It needs a minimum of $20,000 just to go down the road so we can pick up sand. I don't know how many of us in here would spend $20,000 to get a $5,000 trade-in. I know I wouldn't do that. And, and I realize it's a lot of money. I, I don't make the prices. I, we, we, we do a job. We do it every year. We sweep every road every year. So, if somebody says we haven't swept their road, I will beg to differ. And my foreman will say the same thing. We get down every road every year. I've got complaints about people saying they haven't been down my road for three years, and, and that's mostly untrue. If we have an issue with, like we do this year where we haven't been out yet, yes, we do. We are, you know, looking at a company to come in and, and start sweeping our roads because we know we're behind. They get $110 an hour. Right now, we're looking at probably about $30,000 or $40,000 if we use them to sweep the town just once. They, they won't come back if they, if we, you know, we have something else to do. That's just what they'll do with, without, without the cost of the $110 an hour. Renting a sweeper is about $10,000 to $12,000 a month. The other good thing about that is we don't own it, we don't maintain it, we have to put brooms on it, we'd have to do the, some of the general maintenance as far as making sure we grease the machine. We could eliminate sand completely and go to strictly salt during the wintertime. It's probably economically unfeasible because we think we spend a lot of money now fighting all these snowstorms in, on an average year of what, this year was a little over 350 or so thousand dollars. But salt, if we added just salt to our roads per year, we're probably looking at about $500,000 or $600,000 a year. So, we're looking at having to pick up sand every year. There's no, there's no way of getting around it. We, and we try to help out with conservation, too, because that sand gets into some of the estuaries, the streams, the rivers. So, it, it, it needs to be done. And we have no, no options right now other than to purchase a new sweeper. We, we don't think the, the best way to go about it is having somebody come out and do it. So, with that, I'll turn it back if any other questions you might have.
Questions and comments come as part of the motion on Article 23. Yes? Uh, right here.
Meg Janotar, Maplewood Drive. I would just like to let everyone know that my child, who was six years old, went careening down Ash Street, went head over heels after hitting a pile of sand and split open her chin. It is important that, and I spent at least $400 at the hospital getting her stitched up. It's important for public safety that the sand comes off the roads.
Comment comes as part of the discussion. Mr. Stonefield? Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to move the question on Article 23, which is an amendment of the motion to its current state that was read. All those in favor of amending the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, say no.
No.
The motion is amended. We now have the amended motion on the floor for further discussion. Yes, Shirley.
I have a question about the procedures, I guess would be the proper word. There are a lot of these things that are, we're, we're voting on an amount to spend that are actually 16 projects and not 15. I'm not sure we can afford to spend this much more money than what the capital, capital big people have said. They've authorized 377. We're talking 800. And if we're worried about our taxes... And if we're worried about our taxes, that's a big difference. I'm not sure why... I don't think I understand at all why we're not taking the opinions of the Capital Plan people and overruling them essentially and just offering another one. That's what we have a Capital Planning Committee for. If somebody can speak to that.
Ms. Smart.
If I could explain, if you'll indulge me, just so you understand Capital's process. The selectmen set the capital planning budget of $200,000 last November. We send forms out to all the departments. We update something called a five-year plan. What the five-year plan is, is what all of the departments submit for requests. So the selectmen, the Finance Committee, understand down the road what the departments are going to be requesting. Then we get to work. We meet with all the departments and, you know, see if there's projects we can get maybe used, which you can see there's a used dump truck on here. And we grade and prioritize the projects. And wherever the amount that the selectmen said we have to spend is, which last year was $200,000, that's where it's kind of cut off. That's where the project lists. Capital Planning has not reviewed anything in FY '16. We submitted our report in accordance with our bylaw to the selectmen on the beginning of March. We met with the selectmen on March 18th. We were handed this last week. We decided there was nothing we could do. It's a week before town meeting.
Comments and questions come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Yes, ma'am.
Lorna Fred. I've been on the Capital Planning Committee for four years, and actually, I recently resigned because of a lot of misunderstandings and conflicts with the administration over following procedures, following the bylaws of this community, and doing things in an orderly fashion to bring to this floor a plan that was affordable within the budget and had been considered by all of the members of the Capital Planning Committee within the parameters that the Board of Selectmen set, which for this current year was $200,000 to come out of the Capital Stabilization Fund, and then additional projects that could be funded by other sources such as the ambulance receipts, the Water Enterprise Fund, and so forth. And so our plan for fiscal 2015 consists of $206,000 that was supposed to be coming out of this Capital Stabilization Fund, which is not mentioned whatsoever in this $800,000 request that is we're discussing right now. We have an additional $179,000 in projects that we recommended that are coming out of other sources such as the ambulance fund and the Water Enterprise Fund. And we also have the $11 million project for the fire station so that it would come before the floor. So I guess my question is, why is there this sudden departure on the Board of Selectmen's part from the process of examining each project and determining a priority? And also, why are we going out to borrow money when we have $206,000 available in the Capital Stabilization Fund?
Questions and comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Ms. Lucio.
We talked about this at one of our board meetings. And what was suggested, and the Capital Plan folks were there, but what was suggested was we looked at the 15, the first-year recommendations. And according to the bylaw, we get a five-year rolling plan. That's what the Capital Planning is charged with giving us. So we looked at 15, and we looked at 16, and we looked at some of the other things that the town needed. And we also... We also looked at the fact that borrowing right now is very economical. And to avail ourselves of that borrowing capacity, we said, what if instead of just the $200,000 coming out of stabilization, we instead take two years' worth of things that are on our list and that continue to be on the list and roll forward? And we take those and we borrow to pay for some of them. So that we have it now, and that the money that comes, that pays that borrowing when the mortgage comes in, comes instead from stabilization. So you still have the same amount of money basically coming out of stabilization, but you're paying for it on a longer period. We had continuously heard complaints or concerns or pleadings that $200,000 a year was not enough. When we came up with this solution, as I said, the Capital Planning folks were at that meeting, and we got no objections at all. The other thing, and I will take exception to something that was said, but I will take exception outside of this meeting. I do not believe that we were in any kind of violation of bylaws or are in violation. But we presented it, and we said, okay, Mr. Sheehan, go back and work with the town accountant, put the numbers together, what makes sense, how's this going to happen? I heard no objection from Capital Planning in that meeting, none whatsoever. Okay? Now, all of a sudden, we're hearing objections to it. Personally, I feel as though it's become a power struggle. I don't want to continue in that power struggle. You're going to hear a motion a little bit later to try to alleviate that power struggle. It's not that. These are things that our departments have asked for. These are things that were on that five-year plan that we received from Capital. All we're doing is coming up with a solution as to how to get them and how to pay for them. That's what we need you to vote on. Do you think these things that Capital gave to us that we now give to you are things worth doing, and do you think that borrowing for some of it is a good idea?
Comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Mr. Spofford.
This is just a point of interest. Now, we're voting today on two years. Next year, are we going to be voting on one year? Is this like the first year of a two-year deal? So next year, it'll be like 16 and 17, and then the next year, no?
Question comes as part of the discussion of Article 23. Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Not necessarily, Steve. What we did was we took some of the items that were on the list for fiscal '16, we're rolling them into the fiscal '15 plan. We expect next year that there may be some projects that, for whatever reason, breakdown of equipment or what have you, that we may need to address next year. But next year, we're not going to come in with 17 and 18.
Question and comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article Number 23. Be brief. No. Not yet.
About the borrowing, this year, you noticed our budget was so tight that we couldn't pay for our latter fire truck payment. So we took it out of our operating budget, where we've been paying for it for the last four years. And we used the money out of Capital Stabilization, which is why I'm assuming they came back last week and said, let's borrow all this. You know, I also have concerns because I'm not confident in how we're going to pay for this new borrowing if we don't have the money in the operating budget for our fire truck payment, too. It's just something to think about.
Comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 23. Anyone on the floor before we go back to the bench? We need a microphone so I can hear you. We still need a microphone.
Can we move the question, please?
Motion is made and seconded to move the question. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye. Those who are opposed, say no. A noble attempt, but the ayes have it. Do we need the motion read again? Everyone understands what they're voting on? This will require a two-thirds vote. So all those in favor of the motion on Article 23, please say aye. Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 24. To see if the town will approve the sum of $2,802,362 borrowing authorized by the Neshoba Valley Technical School District for the purpose of paying costs of the accelerated roof repair project at the Neshoba Valley Technical High School located at 100 Littleton Road, Westford, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, the project. Which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable... And preserve an asset otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Neshoba Valley Technical School Committee. The MSBA's grant program is non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 52 and 26 hundredths, 52 and 26 percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. The amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA. Is there a motion? Yes, Ms. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town approve the sum $2,802,362 borrowing authorized by the Neshoba Valley Technical School District for the purpose of paying costs of the accelerated roof repair project at the Neshoba Valley Technical High School located at 100 Littleton Road, Westford, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, the project, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that otherwise is capable of supporting the required educational program and for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, set amount to be expended at the direction of the Neshoba Valley Technical School Committee. The MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA, and any project cost the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the MSBA for the project shall not exceed the lesser of, one, 52 and 26 hundredths, 52.26 percent of eligible approved project costs as determined by the MSBA, or, two, the total maximum grant amount determined by the MSBA. The amount of borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the project funding agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article 24. I'm not sure of the beginning of that motion, though. To see if the town will approve the sum, and then it says borrowing authorized. I'm not getting the connection between the sum and that expression, and then what follows it.
That's what I was given to read.
I'm with you on that. I had a problem reading the article, but... Do you have the inflection that it's supposed to be provided to that?
Well, this borrowing, if it's approved by the members of the school district, it's the district that's doing the borrowing. Basically, each of the member towns just votes yes or no on the sum. I mean, perhaps it should say that the sum of...
Did that?
2.8 million of borrowing authorized.
And it's already been authorized, or to be...
The school district committee will have already voted to do this, but they have to get the members to weigh in as well.
And that's what this explains?
That's correct. This is a majority vote as well. It's not a two-thirds, because the town's not borrowing.
All right, I'll live with it. A microphone for the gentleman here.
Fred Thrasher. Is the $2,802,000 the total cost of the project or towns' share?
Yes, Superintendent.
It is the total cost of the project, and 52.26 percent will be removed for that for a remainder of 1.4 million to be spread over eight towns over 10 years. And I think I'm going to take the fire chief's philosophy, because I did it with 4.5 percent, assuming a 10-year. And it worked out to be, at this present stage of 15 percent of the population, your cost would be $21,799 in fiscal year '16. But if I take the chief's estimate of 2.5, do you really... You sure about that? Okay. I'll believe him. Okay, then I would say that basically cuts it in half. This has not gone to bond council until it completes the process. We have had all towns favorably voted. But once again, this is the only two remaining sections of the roof that were not approved in the project in 2005 because they were done in '94 and '97, and we're still under warranty.
Question and comments come as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 24. Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Barrett, Highland Street. This motion comes as something of a revelation to me, because it appears that repairs can be eligible for grants from the School Building Authority for reimbursement. And I guess we saw that with North Middlesex. As I recall, we put a new roof on the North Middlesex High School, maybe four or five years ago, maybe a little bit longer. But now, we're building a new high school. So I would like to know, and I'm trying not to be sarcastic here, can you, ma'am, I guess, warrant how long we're going to have this building? I just want to make sure that we're not spending $3 million on a new roof, and then three or four years from now, we're going to be building a new school.
All I can tell you is we are entering into our 45th year of excellence, and we have no intentions of building a new school. And anybody who's visited Neshoba, it is in wonderful condition. We have kept it up. We did a major project in 2003 through '05. And to tell you the truth, to replicate a vocational technical building would be astronomical. So we have to keep it up.
Thank you.
Comments and questions come as part of the motion on Article 24. Any further questions or comments? We appear to be ready to vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 24, please say aye. Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to... To see if the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 110A. Quote, "Any public office in any city or town may remain closed or on any or all Saturdays, as may be determined from time to time in a city by the city council, subject to the provisions of the city charter, or in a town by vote of the town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions of Section 9 of Chapter 4 shall apply in the case of such closing of any such office on any Saturday to the same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday, or take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 110A, that any public office of the town may remain closed on any or all Saturdays, as may be determined from time to time by vote of the town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 9, shall apply. Where the last day for performance of any act falls on a Saturday, the act may be performed on the next succeeding business day to the same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday.
Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article 25. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, I'm a lawyer, but I still don't know what this means. Can, can the town clerk perhaps explain it? Because does this mean that the, the town can vote to keep town offices open on Saturdays, or that we won't have them open on Saturdays, I guess?
Madam Clerk.
It means that, um, from time to time, we have to have voter registration for elections, for town meetings, special town meetings, annual town meetings. And sometimes those less data registered to vote falls on a Saturday. And we have to remain in the office from nine in the morning till five in the afternoon. And this will push it off to, so that we won't have to be there on a Saturday. The last day to vote, registered to vote would be on a Monday. Right now, what we do a lot of times is, um, the police department graciously has taken it over, and people go there to register to vote. Really, do we have anyone come in to register to vote on those days?
Question and comments come as part of the motion on Article 25. Any further questions or comments? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Another robust effort, though. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to amend the second paragraph to Section E of 14-1 Capitol Planning Committee by inserting the underlying language. "No appropriation shall be voted for a capital improvement requested by a department, board, or commission unless the proposed capital improvement is considered in the committee's report or determined by the Board of Selectmen upon recommendation of the town administrator to be of an emergency nature or to be of compelling need, or take any other action in relation thereto." Is there a motion? Ms. Licio.
I move that the town vote to take no action.
Motion has been made and seconded to take no action on Article 26. Is there any questions or comments with regard to the motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Licio.
I'd like to make a comment on this. At our selectmen's meeting, um... I suggested, um, well, two weeks ago at our selectmen's meeting, was it two or just one? Two weeks ago, um, we were talking about, um... No, it was last week.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter, but it does, because Carolyn was there, okay? It was last week, yes. We have had quite a bit of discussion about capital planning, the role of capital planning, the way the bylaw is written. And what became evident last week when we talked, or at least evident to me, was, um, there seems to be a misunderstanding in terms of terminology. And that when you say a word to one person, it may not have the same meaning to another. It's obvious that we need to talk that over more. We were ready to, to do the motion, to do a motion for a change to the bylaw, but rather, um, I suggested, and, and the board agreed, that we would take no action on this tonight, because what we'd like to do is either get the MMA in here and/or, um, a couple of towns that have been used as models for capital planning committees and how they've done those capital plans, so that together we can formulate exactly what it should be. If need be, come back to you with a change to the bylaw to make it clearer for the people that will take our places someday. And, um, and be able to, to work this out and figure out how we can all work together to make this happen. That's why we're not taking any action on it tonight.
Comments come as part of the discussion of the motion to take no action on Article 26. Is there any other comments or questions? There appear to be none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor of taking no action on Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Article 27. To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of a parcel of land from the treasurer held for the purpose of sale at auction as tax titled land to the Board of Selectmen for purposes of conveyance and authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said parcel to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen shall determine. Said parcel of land known as the Clement property, located off South Row Road and Emory Road, identified by the assessors' maps as Map 25, Block 3, Lot 0, and being the same premises as described in an instrument of taking recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds at Book 62754, Page 252. Said land to be used for open space for the benefit of the public in perpetuity pursuant to Article 97, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of a parcel of land from the treasurer held for the purpose of sale at auction as tax titled land to the Board of Selectmen for purposes of conveyance and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said parcel to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen shall determine. Said parcel of land known as the Clement property, located off South Row Road and Emory Road, identified by the assessors as Map 25, Block 3, Lot 0, and being the same premises as described in an instrument of taking recorded at the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds at Book 62754, Page 252. Said land to be used for open space for the benefit of the public in perpetuity pursuant to Article 97. There's a map on the... green sheet.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions and, or comments on the motion? Yes, sir.
Just a quick question on this one, if you don't mind. Is the $44,800 a fixed amount that will not change?
Question comes as part of the discussion. Yes, Ms. Chapman.
I'm pretty sure that's not going to change. There's someone here from Fish and Game, if, if anyone wants to question that.
Where is the representative from the Fish and Game? Ah, no wonder you were waving at me, saying, yeah, yeah. Would the floor object to hearing from the state representatives who's here? Good. I'm not so sure if that's on.
Thanks. Sorry about that. Uh, yes, uh, that number is, would be the number that would be paid for the property, subject to a verification by an appraisal which the state would pay for.
Question and comment comes as part of the answer.
Subject to an appraisal which the state would pay for.
Question and answer comes as part of the discussion on the motion on Article 27. Yes, Mr. Thrasher. Dr. Thrasher. Fred Thrasher. It looks landlocked. Uh, where is the access for the passive recreation?
The Commonwealth recently acquired the budding property from Mr. Proctor. And so, um, the access would be through other land that's already owned by the Commonwealth.
Question comes as part of the discussion of the motion on Article 27. Any further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
So if I understood you correctly, this is not a fixed amount. Is that correct? Well, you said it was going to be adjusted, and now you're saying, no, it's a fixed amount.
If you'd like to clarify your comment.
Sorry. No, I, I did say that it is a fixed amount. It would be, it's subject to an appraisal that verifies that. But there's no reason for me to believe that, um, that figure would not be verified by an appraisal.
So, the fixed amount subject to?
Correct.
So that's a fixed amount, subject to?
Correct.
There's always room for dispute. Mr. Biswanger, do you have a question?
It's, uh... The land is 350 yards away from the rifle range. Are you going to put up a protective barrier so that people won't get shot?
Question comes as part of the discussion.
Are, are you, I, I'm not sure if I understand your question. Are you saying that the Rodden Gun Club's, uh, firing range currently has bullets going onto private, well, onto town-owned property?
Mr. Biswanger.
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm, what I'm saying is that that land is in direct... Our rifle range, our pistol range, our trap range is in direct, is in direct, uh, directly behind that, so that if somebody is walking in that area of that, and they accidentally walk towards our rifle and pistol range, they could accidentally walk into our live-fire range. I think you need to mark your property very, very carefully.
Comments come as part of the discussion. I think we're ready to move on from that. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Pettit Townsend, I do believe that your property is marked around the areas towards the, um, the power lines, and... I realize that, but one would expect that the property would be marked by the Rodden Gun Club, and you would prevent your shooting from going there. Because if I live next door...
Please, Mr. Biswanger, she has the floor.
It just seems that, um, it is the responsibility of the Rodden Gun Club to know where their bullets are going, and they shouldn't be going on other property, whether it's open space, whether it's my property, whether it's your property. That just would be an assumption. Thank you.
Comments come as part of the discussion. Just don't fail. Motion has been made and seconded to move the question on Article 27. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. We're ready to vote on Article 27. Two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion on Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
Oh, that's close. That's close. There's got to be a two-thirds vote. Let's try this again. All those in favor of the motion on Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Ooh. All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Article 28. To see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of two parcels of land from the Conservation Commission to the Board of Selectmen for purposes of conveyance and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said parcels to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen shall determine. Said parcels of land located on Haynes Road in Townsend, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, and shown as Open Space Area A and Open Space Area B respectively on a plan of land entitled Lock Estates, Townsend, Mass., prepared for Gerald and Joan Croto? Croto? Not so sure. Croto. Thank you. Dated May 25, 1999, amended March 21, 2000, prepared by Ducharme &amp; Wheeler Inc., Bolton, Mass., as described in a deed recorded with the Middlesex South District Registry of Deeds in Book 53439, Page 134, and identified by the assessors as Map 44, Block 4, Lots 0 and 11 respectively. Said properties to be used for open space for the benefit of the public in perpetuity pursuant to Article 97 of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution and authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for approval of the conveyance of the properties described herein under said Article 97, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to file Article 97 legislation with the General Court, or take any other action in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Ms. Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of two parcels of land from the Conservation Commission to the Board of Selectmen for purposes of conveyance and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said parcels to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife on such terms and conditions and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen shall determine. Said parcels of land located on Haynes Road in Townsend, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, and shown as Open Space Area A and Open Space Area B respectively on a plan of land entitled Lock Estates, Townsend, Mass., prepared for Gerald and Joan Croto dated May 25, 1999, amended March 21, 2000, prepared by Ducharme &amp; Wheeler Inc., Bolton, Mass., as described in a deed recorded with the Middlesex South Registry, District Registry of Deeds in Book 53439, Page 134, and identified by the assessors as Map 44, Block 4, Lots 0 and 11 respectively. Said properties to be used for open space for the benefit of the public in perpetuity pursuant to Article 97 of amendments, of the amendments to the Massachusetts Constitution and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the Massachusetts General Court for approval of the conveyance of the properties described herein under said Article 97, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to file Article 97 legislation with the General Court.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded with regard to Article 28. Any questions or comments with regard to the motion? There appear to be none. This will require a two-thirds vote. This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. Dissolve. Motion has been made to dissolve the town meeting. It's been seconded. It's not debatable. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, say no.
No.
All right. You are one heck of a floor tonight. Woof.